Jared and Ron.
We're live, gentlemen.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two Board of Selectmen meeting. I need to have a clerk pro temp. As we do not expect Ms. Wertz, nor do we expect Mr. Sullivan this evening. May I have a motion, Mr. Chadwick? You're muted, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to pro temp, Mr. Slavin.
Is there a second to the motion to have Mr. Slavin serve as the clerk pro temp?
Second.
Thank you. So any further discussion on the motion to make Mr. Slavin be as a clerk pro temp for this evening's meeting? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. Thank you very much. May I have a roll call, Mr. Slavin?
Present are select board members, Slavin, Chadwick, Bessie, Whiteside, Town Council, Bowen is also present. Thank you.
Thank you. Going to ask Mr. Chadwick to do the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask the rest of you to mute yourselves as you say it. Thank you.
Why do we use to the United States? To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under.
Well, Mr. Chadwick, that was interesting.
Is my internet not working?
It's your internet again, sir. Yes, I'm sorry. Let's see, announcements, I'm going to go to Mr. Bessie first, please, sir.
No announcements tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick, do you have any announcements, sir?
I do, as long as my internet will allow me to. I guess they're working on Comcast on Glen Charlie Road, is from a message I just got. Wareham Girl Softball Player of the Week are as follows. Chloe DeRosa for the junior division and Sawyer Putin for the senior division. On May twenty-second at the Pear in Kalamet, there will be a bake sale and meat raffle, starting at three P M. Also, the summer signups are going on now at warehams softball dot com. Another announcement is Thursday, May nineteenth, from four to eight at Kadova in Wareham Crossing, there will be a fundraising event for the Deekus Community, excuse me, Communities Center Foundation, where twenty-five percent of all sales will go to the organization. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin, do you have any announcements, sir? You're muted, sir.
Sorry, trying to use all the apparatus all over the place here. The Mass Municipal Association has sent out a notice to the Selectmen, I think I forwarded to everybody as well. The handbook for Selectmen is, or Select Board Members, correct now, is available online. Or you can also order directly, but it'll be easy just to be online and have to kill a bunch of trees to print it out. It's extremely important, you get a copy of that for the three new members we have. It goes into great detail how, what, where, when. I'm also with the other four regional directors in the process of updating and revising as well. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements, and before I make those announcements, if you are a constable here for reappointment and you choose to address the board, please raise your hand and you will be let into the meeting. Other than that, we don't usually have to talk to you, but we'd love to talk to you if you would raise your hands, please, sir, gentlemen and lady. The announcement I have for the library, the Friends of the Libraries Annual Rubber Duck Race returns after taking a bread break because of COVID. On Sunday, May twenty-ninth, the race takes place at the Tyhonet Pond Canal, located at the A.D. Makepeace Company at Tyhonet Village, one fifty Tyhonet Road. Registration is from eleven to twelve forty-five. There will be games and a story walk led by the children's librarian, Mrs. Hickey. Ducks are on sale at the race or before at either the library or Makepeace Farms. Ducks are one for five dollars, six for twenty-five dollars, thirteen for fifty, and twenty-five for a hundred dollars. And the race starts at one P M. It's actually quite a funny thing to watch. Also, there is a free concert at the library after the race sponsored by the Friends. May twenty-ninth at two, North Sea Gas, one of Scotland's most popular folk bands, will be performing as the last concert of their U S tour. The musicians play a wide variety of instruments and use humor and stories in their concerts for all ages, and again, free. And the May used book sale is Thursday, May nineteenth, from nine thirty to four thirty, Friday, May twentieth, nine thirty to three P M., and Saturday, May twenty-first, nine thirty to one P M. The other thing I'd just like to ask us to do, we don't have any COVID numbers to report this week, but I know that the flags have been at half mast across the country. And they have been at half mast to recognize that over one million people have died of COVID in the past couple of years. So I would like to ask for a moment of silence to honor all of those people who died, as well as the families and friends that they left behind. Please. Thank you. Mr. Slavin, I believe item A under five, we have not, our deadline has passed, so we can't act on that, am I correct?
Actually, the way it's listed is not really correct. It says S M M P O, which is an appointment for each one of the areas that Serpette covers. And they have basically like five members at large like that. That, there is no opening in our area itself. There is a member from Dockmouth and one from, I believe, Berkeley to cover the areas in those particular regions. So we don't have one per se. The S M M P O is represented by myself as the Chair of the Serpette Commission for Wareham, even though we don't have a direct member. We have my membership that way. Well, I think it really is, we have this piece that got in from Turning Point, which was late. The Turning Point is basically a member at large for the Serpette Commission, not for the M P O. I will tomorrow, when I have a meeting in the morning, I will check to see whether or not they actually got this in time, because they were supposed to send it themselves directly as well.
Okay.
So I'll let them know if this is valid or not.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. The agenda lists the constables who would be expiring, their terms would be expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Obviously, it should be two thousand and twenty-three.
True.
Mr. Latimer, do you choose to address this board? You're one of our constables? If not, you do, okay?
No, I just want to say hi, and I wanted to thank you for the meeting, and I hope that my reappointment in the town.
You were very difficult to understand, sir.
Okay, could you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank, thank you. I just wanted to thank you guys for inviting me to the meeting for the reminder of the reappointment. And I'd like to thank you for your time on that, and I would definitely like to hopefully get my reappointment in the town. It's a big part of my livelihood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Coughlin, do you choose to be let into the meeting? I see you have your hand up. If so, Mr. White, would you let Mr. Coughlin into the meeting? I'm guessing he would choose to address the board as well. Just for informational purposes, these appointments are made on an annual basis. You were sent today a list of the remittances that the constables make to the town of Wareham. They pay an annual fee of fifty dollars to the town, and then they pay a percentage of their service fees to the town. And you have in that report that we sent you today, the total collected for the current fiscal year. Mr. Coughlin, do you choose to address the board, sir? You would need to unmute yourself, sir. Oh, and Ms. Blair, okay, we'll do Mr. Coughlin first. Mr. Coughlin, you're muted, sir. Okay, and Ms. Blair, I don't know if you were there for a second, but you disappeared, so I don't know if you're going to come back. All right, I'll accept a motion, Mr. Slavin. Oh, wait, there you are, Mr. Coughlin.
I just wanted to be marked as present, this Zoom is a little bit new to me.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Slavin?
Yeah, we've done this before, just want to make sure we're okay. Since there is no dollar mouse to worry about for fees, et cetera, everybody is through and embedded with everything. I think I'd like to make a motion, just going right down the line from one through nine, with the renewal date of June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. If that's acceptable to the chair.
It is acceptable, so it would be as printed on the agenda, sir?
As printed on the agenda, and if you'd like, I'll read, go down the list of names.
No, that's fine.
Not necessary.
Not necessary. May I have a second to his motion, please, to appoint all of the nine individuals listed on the agenda?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint all through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I will go for a roll call vote then. Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Ladies and gentlemen, your paperwork will probably be ready on Monday in the Selectmen, Board of Selectmen's office, and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Okay, next on the agenda is continued discussion, a possible vote to appoint a B S member or a representative to. First one up is the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust. They usually meet in the mornings, which makes it extremely difficult, so of the people available, I would make a motion to appoint Mrs. Whiteside Chair as a member for the Wareham Affordable Trust.
Wareham Affordable Housing Trust meets at nine o'clock on Tuesdays. Was there, I heard a motion, is there a second to the motion? Did I cut you off?
No, there's a second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to make me the member of the Wareham Affordable Housing Trust? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero. The next one, sir?
Next one is the C M W R R D D, which basically is the district that we have for our trash program, et cetera, with the town, I believe, of, I guess we'll just cover in ourselves at this point here. Again, they meet in the morning area time, and I would ask for a motion to appoint Mrs. Whiteside again, same reason.
I'll second them.
Motion made and seconded. I think they actually meet at night, but that's okay. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. The next one, sir?
Community Events Committee, as required, for an article was passed some years ago from the House and Senate. At the state level, Community Events Committee has one member from the Board of Selectmen who is a voting member, and that member has been myself for, I guess, eight, nine years now. So if someone wants to make a motion to reappoint me, unless somebody else wants to.
I make a motion to reappoint Mr. Slavin.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint Mr. Slavin as a member of Community Events Committee? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero. Next.
Next is Plymouth County Commissioners Advisory Board. That particular group, we meet three times a year, we pass basically the budget for the county. Presently, I'm the Chairman of the Executive Committee for that particular board, and I've been on that advisory board also for about ten years. So if someone would like a motion to go ahead and reappoint, I'll be happy to continue if you want.
I make a motion to reappoint Mr. Slavin to the Plymouth County Commissioners Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie, is there a second to that motion?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, thank you very much, next.
Next, Southeastern Massachusetts Community Rail Task Force. Same situation, I've been on that particular board for about nine years now. Because Wareham, even though we're a mass rail, you know, M B T A, you know, community, we really don't participate very often, because we don't have any full service, and we get a basically a buy on the cost and everything else. Again, I go once a year, it's the same thing, I've been on it for about nine years. If we do get community rail, I'm hoping somebody else on the board will step up and do it, because you'll have to go to Boston.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Mr. Slavin to the Southeastern, Southeastern Massachusetts Community Rail Task Force.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes, four zero zero, thank you, next.
Okay, next, the Southeastern Regional Planning Economic Development District, which is Serpette. These two items have already been done already, I believe we already voted for myself to continue on the board as the Select Board Member's Representative, and I believe Mr. King was also appointed by the Planning Board as required by the setup of Serpette.
Yes. Yes, he was, but I think we should confirm both appointments, just to make sure that it's all set, if you don't mind.
Okay. Not a problem. I'll need a motion to appoint Selectmen Slavin as the member for the Board of Selectmen for the Serpette Commission.
Make that motion.
As well as Mr. King from the Planning Board.
I was going to do the two separate, but it's okay.
I made a motion to accept Mr. Slavin and Mr. King as a member from the Board of Selectmen and a member from the Planning Board to the Serpette.
Thank you very much, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, is there any further discussion to that motion?
Just so people understand, these are one-year appointments on these.
Yes, sir.
You've done every.
Yep.
Oh.
Any further discussion on the motion? I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Myself, yes, done. Mr. White, if you please would let in the individuals who are here to discuss A S V Mass Operating, otherwise known as Clean Something. If you are with that company, please raise your hand, so we can know to let you into the meeting, thank you. Mr. Slavin, one last one.
Last one is the Audit Committee. Basically, I've been on that committee as well, I started it. We've had members basically drop off, because the audits we do in the last five years had no what we call major problems or incidents at all, and it's been very clean all the way through. If the board would like, probably because the D O R Department of Revenue really likes to see audit committees on municipalities, it makes them more comfortable, and it also gives us a little better rating. So if you want, I'll continue as a member, and I'm also going to have to reach out to the Finance Committee and different committees, plus a couple of lodge members to put this back into effect. There's a total of five members. So if the board wants, we'll put this back in and get it up running again.
My personal opinion is that is that it is an important committee, because it helps people understand the finances of the town of Wareham. Municipal finance is a totally unusual animal, and I think it's important that we have a committee to help disseminate information. So I would ask for a motion.
I will make that motion to appoint Mr. Slavin to the Audit Committee.
Thank you, is there a second to that motion?
I will second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chadwick, is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint Mr. Slavin, it's a one-year appointment to the Audit Committee? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, four zero zero, thank you. Moving on, we had already voted and issued the letter of support regarding the sale of Royal Crest Mobile Home Park. You have a copy of that letter in your agenda packet, just for information. And next on the agenda is discussion and vote to authorize negotiations and possible execution of a host community agreement with A S V Mass Operating, Inc. at three thirty sixty-five Cranberry Highway East Wareham. Mr. Alderman, I can pronounce your name, Mr. Hale?
Right.
Oh, goodie. Is there anybody else representing the applicant to be let into the meetings?
It will just be the two of us today.
Okay, thank you very much. Gentlemen, can you, I know you have a presentation to share with us, so please feel free to introduce yourselves and make your presentation to this board.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Kent Hale, and I'm the President Chief Operating Officer of Clean Tech, a cannabinoid life sciences company based in Seattle, Washington. We're speaking with you today in hopes of getting approval for a host community agreement required to support our product manufacturing license application that we're preparing for the state. With me today is Jesse Alderman, our Massachusetts-based counsel, and together we will be making a presentation on Clean Tech's plans for your consideration. Jesse, would you like to introduce yourself before we begin and before you share your screen?
Sure, happy to, Kent. My name is Jesse Alderman, I am the co-chair of the Cannabis Practice at Foley-Hoag law firm in Boston, I believe I've appeared before you at least once before on behalf of an applicant or two, and without further ado, I would be happy to share my screen, just to be clear, and we'll get into this in sub-substance in the, in the presentation, what Clean Tech is proposing is a, is to be authorized to negotiate a host community agreement with the town to operate solely as a marijuana product manufacturer, and for the new Select Board members who, who have not done this rodeo before, that is a, the, the class of license that takes material from the cannabis plant, in this case, it would just be liquid oil, and processes it, in this case, into further extractive material and sells it at wholesale, so no retail, no growing of plants, no actually plant biomass anywhere on the site, and Kent will get further into that, but I just wanted to disabuse anybody of the notion that this might be a retailer or even one of the big grow, energy-intensive grow facilities, so with that, share my screen and turn it back over to, to Kent. May I, may I share my screen, Madam?
Yes, please, and what I'm going to ask you to do is, I'm going to ask you, gentlemen, to make your presentation, then I will go around to each of my board members and ask them if they have questions for you, and then we will be able to possibly vote on your request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Jesse is going to drive here, so Jesse, if you go to the first page, and we'll talk a little bit about who we are.
Is everyone seeing the slide? The cover screen?
Okay, great.
So Clean Tech is a cannabinoid life sciences company, as, as I mentioned earlier. We only work in regulated markets across the country, and we'll share with you a little bit about our progress to date. We create what we believe and have validated multiple times to be the most rigorously tested product on the market, tested for pesticides, heavy metals, residual solvents, multiple times before we bring our product to market and sell on a wholesale basis. We do have a proprietary patented process. The product that we make is a high-quality THC Delta Nine distillate product, which we sell on the wholesale basis. Our product is the primary input for manufacturers that create the end product that would be available in a regulated store. Things like vape carts, ingestible things like gummies, mints, confections, baked goods, beverages, topicals, capsules, sublinguals, tinctures, and sprays. About thirty-five to forty percent of products that are sold in legal cannabis retail establishments are made from this base ingredient. Next slide, please. Our science and our company is really rooted in safety and science. We rigorously test all of our products, and we embrace a high level of regulation to make sure that products that are available in these regulated channels are safe. We're transparent about the way that we operate and are completely open book as it comes to anything related to providing results of our testing that are required by the state, and at any point in time, we're prepared and have experience in being accountable and being responsible operators that abide by the regulated systems in all the markets in which we operate. Next slide. We have an experienced team of operators. Peter Saladino is our C E O, is our primary investor in funding our operations as we go and grow across the country. Peter, interesting enough, was the very first license holder in the state of Washington when adult-use cannabis was permitted. Shortly along after that, Marcus Charles, who's a member of our team, worked very closely with Peter in, in bringing the legal cannabis market to the state, which it currently enjoys the success that it's experienced in the state of Washington. I joined in two thousand and seventeen, running several operations, including this one, and have a great deal of experience not only in cannabis, but all of us in growing and scaling businesses that, across the country, and in, in multiple markets and running multi-state operations. Jesse mentioned what we're applying for. It is a product manufacturing license, and by definition, that name may, may imply that we make a final product, but Jesse clarified we don't. Our final product is a input material that is sold B to B to the ultimate manufacturers of final products, which I mentioned earlier, and I'm sharing with you again here. But it is important to note that there is no retail and there is no plant cultivation on, on premise. You'll see the site in just a moment that we're planning on expanding to, and it's a, it's a relatively modest operation, but we're proud to be bringing anywhere between twelve and eighteen, you know, good paying jobs to the local community. Jesse, next. You'll see here an image of what we consider to be our final product, which is an input, it's an oil-based product. It's commonly used in the cannabis industry. Currently, we operate in Arizona under a licensing agreement with a license holder. And in Washington, we hold two of our own licenses, and in the state of Massachusetts, we would be pursuing our own license in, in your state. The location that we've identified, is it Cranberry Commons? I'm sure you are all familiar with that, it's, it's a very, it's a very large building that in large part is connected, but in our case, we've identified a standalone building that is part of that property, but it is separate from the larger building itself. And you'll see on the next slide visually what that, what that building looks like currently. The location is listed here, this may be something that you've driven by or maybe somewhat familiar with, but this is a building that we've identified that will meet our needs, and we're going to have to do a significant amount of work on the building, which we're prepared and experienced to do, and you'll see on the next slide some of the work that we, that we plan on having to do. We've secured the services of a, an architect that's in Marion, Massachusetts, that has experience, and we believe will meet our needs. The system will need, excuse me, the building will need a fair amount of tenant improvements, including that kind of at a high level, some of the larger investments that we're having to make here, H V A C, electrical, general building improvements, updating all of the, of the, the paint and the windows. updating all of the, of the, the paint and the windows and the awnings, security system that is compatible with the regulatory requirements of state, improving the parking, installing a fence around that, again, consistent with the requirements of the state. All in all, we expect the tenant improvements to be between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And all of that work, I may add, will be done by local contractors.
I'll take over on, on this slide, just to orient the select board on where we are today. We have not just begun this process, but in fact have been on the ground with, meeting with the town and local residents since January, where we first held a meeting with Mr. Buckland, the Director of Planning. We've submitted a formal written business plan and very modest comments to the town's form of host community agreement and are very, and are prepared and willing to sign that agreement, which among other things would pay to the town a three percent host commu-, a community impact fee, three percent of revenue annually in a community impact fee, which you currently have with your other licensees of all types, retail, a product manufacturing and, and cultivation. We held a statutorily required community outreach meeting at Town Hall about two, a little over two months ago. That, as required by Cannabis Control Commission regulations, notifies all butters, various town boards, and, and the legal notice for that meeting was posted in Wareham Week. We did not receive any, we did not have any attendees other than the Planning Department there, which we take to be a sign hopefully of a lack of, of controversy for this proposal. We then had a second meeting with the Town Administrator and the Director of Planning and Economic Development. And that, we are here before you today. The site will require a special permit from the ZBA if we are fortunate, fortunate enough to receive a host community agreement. And of course, would, would require a product manufacturer license from the Cannabis Control Commission. It is a pre, for those who might not be familiar, is a prerequisite that we obtain from you first a host community agreement executed and signed and certified by the town before we are able to apply for that state license. But it is the state license that, it is during the state license process that Cannabis Control Commission inspectors will visit the facility and make sure all security systems are adequate, that all personnel that work in the facility, as well as all owners and officers of the company will be background checked with fingerprint-based background screening, and that we will be attentive to other, to compliance with all CCC regulations as, in addition to other requirements of the Cannabis Control Board, like diverse hiring practices. Because this is often an area of, of question that we receive at, at meetings of this sort, I just want to touch on a few security items. Because we're only a wholesale manufacturer here, this is in, in many ways a uniquely safe operation insofar as the products are only pre-market formulations. There are no gummies, vapes, flower, plants, anything that could be usable to the average consumer onsite and making it while, while these facilities and I'm quite confident, you know, you're six into this and in, into the adult-use cannabis legalization experiment, I've, I've all proven to be quite secure, including the ones that you have in the town of Wareham. It is, it is in fact the case that this is a, a, a less likely target for any theft due to, due to the limited nature of what we hold on the site. That being said, there would be full electronic control systems, alarm systems, redundant alarm systems, authentication requirements requiring RFID cards for anybody to access the facility, video surveillance on every inch of the interior and exterior of the site. CCC security regulations, as you likely know, are, are pretty stringent in this regard. I mentioned the host community agreement, your host community agreement containing a, a provision as authorized by Chapter ninety-four G that we pay a community impact fee, and we are enthusiastically agree to do so. Kent mentioned the, the provision of fifteen to twenty good paying jobs here for this proposed facility and the tenant improvements as well. We, of course, will probably, you know, be in discussions with any other conditions for site access, parking, or any other items we may not have thought of here through the zoning process, which again, we will require a special permit from the ZBA. As I, as we beating, risk of beating a dead horse, as we've mentioned, no consumers, no access to the public on this site, no retail, no plants being grown, no odors of any kind. This is a, a relatively unintrusive facility as far as these things go. And I think with that, we'll, we'll hopefully educate you tonight on what we'd love to do and partner with the town to do and let Kent and if I can be helpful, answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Alderman. I'm going to start with Mr. Bessie. Do you have any questions, sir?
Just a, just a couple. I, I, I'm quite familiar with this process, so I can, I can speak to it a little bit. So the first, so, so you're going to be, you know, basically manufacturing distillate, which is going to be then supplied to other manufacturers within the state of Massachusetts to make end, user-end products. Now, where, where are you going to get your, your materials from in order to produce this distillate?
Well, and on sourcing that from, from inside the state. We're currently, currently in the process of identifying supply chain partners and, and reviewing operations for quality, making sure that they meet the standards that we have for our operation.
Okay. And how long has Clean Tech been operating as a whole? I know you're out of, based out of Washington, but how long have you been operating as a whole?
The, the science itself, because it is a proprietary process, has been in development for the better part of about five years. But we've been operating commercially for about two and a half years.
Okay, and currently no business in Massachusetts? You're expanding to our, to the Massachusetts market?
Correct. No, no current, no current operations in your state.
Okay, and what, what made Wareham a target for your operation? What, what attracted you to us?
Wareham was recommended as a, as a good community to operate in and a, a community that could, could benefit from some economic growth and, you know, and a, and a good city, excuse me, a good town to work with. And so it was suggested, we reviewed several different options and, and decided to go with the proposal that we've presented to you today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chadwick, do you have questions, sir?
I have no questions at this point in time.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin, do you have any questions, sir?
The, no, the business plan was, was thoroughly done. I found one little error in the section two dash two. It's easy, it's not a problem. It, it has a word with and should be within, just to let you know.
Full responsibility for that.
All right, you'll have to give twenty lashes or something. Basically, the, 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 the host agreement is something which, as they've explained, is something the town has to do or any municipality. The Cannabis Control Commission doesn't do anything until a host agreement is signed and done and then goes to work, and hopefully they'll speed up their process, which has been very slow over the last three years. Just so everybody understands the, we, we get basically all the tax, the sales tax money that's assigned to us. We also have, I think it's like a three percent impact fee. Everybody needs to understand, and we've been talking about it for quite a while, that impact fee is still under Cannabis Control Commission. I'm not so just that direction, but there's looking at it back and forth. They may or may not eliminate that impact fee down the line. So just so everybody understands what we're getting may not be what we end up with. And of course, they've already mentioned that they have to go out and reach out to some nonprofits in the, in the town as well for assistance and help as a community member as well. So the application's fine. I wish I had another day or so to go through it, but I had time today to read all of them. Thank you. Appreciate coming to them.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Have you already applied to the zoning board of appeals or not?
The applicant has not yet applied to the ZBA. We would do that contemporaneously with the CCC. As, as Mr. Slavin mentioned, the CCC is notoriously slow. So we would run those on parallel tracks. The HCA is a gating item. If, if for some reason, and we, we, we pray, we're fortunate enough not to have this occur. For some reason, you were uninterested in executing a host community agreement, we would, we would have to go to another municipality. So we kind of hold off on, on further steps until we have the assurance of an HCA.
Understood. And do you have a lease or you will have a lease on the building? And how long would the lease be, sir?
We currently do have a, a lease. It's, it's a, it's a conditional lease based upon us receiving a host community agreement and, and a, a full license from the state. The, the current lease is, is kind of conditional. It's a six-month lease, and then once this was approved, we would enter into a lease preferably at minimum five years.
Thank you, sir. I have no further questions, gentlemen. My board members, if you have no further questions, I will. Ron, you have your hand up.
Yes, I, I just have one more question. I, and it might be too early, but maybe, do you have, do you have any type of preliminary revenue projections that this operation might, might bring?
Yes, we, we provided those in the, in the business plan that, that we submitted. Our, our operation has the ability to scale up considerably, so I would think that the first full twelve months of operation certainly would be in excess of twenty-five million dollars to, it could be considerably higher than that. So I think that, you know, if you're looking at the three percent number, we'd be looking at, will in excess of half a million dollars. And that, I think, would be conservative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing no further questions, I will accept a motion, Mr. Slavin.
Make a motion that we go into a host community agreement with ASV MA Operating, Inc.
Excuse me. Your motion has to be to authorize negotiations and possible execution of the host community agreement. Is that your motion, sir?
So does.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Bessie. Is there any further discussion on the motion, which would be to approve or to authorize negotiations and possible execution of an HCA? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Gentlemen, you are all set to continue your negotiations with Mr. Sullivan and through Mr. Buckland. Thank you very much for your attendance this evening, and thank you for choosing to do business in Wareham. We appreciate it.
Well, we look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. White, you're going to be letting Mr. Green in for the next discussion, please. The next discussion is to listen to a proposal from J.C. Green for a delivery service for marijuana, looking to execute negotiations and execution of an HCA. Mr. Green, do you have anybody else with you? If, if you do, would they please raise their hands so we can let them into the meeting? No? Okay. Mr. Green, you're muted at the moment, but we would love to have you introduce yourself and introduce your request, which is.
I'm looking for the unmute button.
Okay.
Do I have you folks now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I am alone for this meeting.
Thank you. Would you introduce yourself and do your presentation, sir, please?
My name is John Collison. I also go by the name J.C. Green. I've been in the cannabis industry for a long time. I graduated Wareham class of eighty-five. Proud to call Wareham home, and I couldn't think of a better place to put my businesses other than Wareham, Mass.
Do you choose to speak to your presentation? Do you have a, anything other than the business proposal that you sent to us? I believe it's fifty-some odd pages that you sent us.
I have that. I also just emailed Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Slavin the presentation that I had. I did not know how to get it onto the computer for you folks to be able to see it, like the gentleman just did in front of me. So I have it on my phone to be able to read off of. But I don't have it screen ready. I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Slavin. Mr. Sullivan's not with us this evening, so he can't do the screen sharing. Why don't you just then address the board as to what it is that you choose to do?
I'm coming in for three host community agreements, one for cultivation, one for delivery, and one for manufacturing.
And where do you plan to locate?
Three Toll Road in Industrial Park across the street from Walmart.
Okay. So you, you are actually looking for three separate agreements, am I correct?
Correct, Mrs. Chairman.
Gentlemen, have you had an opportunity to review the package of information, gentlemen, Board of Selectmen, gentlemen? No, sir? Okay. Mr. Chadwick, have you had an opportunity to review it?
Not all three agreements. Only one I have is for delivery, marijuana delivery operator.
That's all that I have as well. Mr. Bessie?
So I'm, I'm just, I've had a chance to kind of go through a little bit of it and really just kind of talking about the different phases that he's looking to go with phase one cultivation, phase two manufacturing, and then phase three of retail location. But I haven't, there's a lot of content here, so I haven't been able to review all of it, because, you know, obviously there was a, a second, a second one that we've reviewed tonight. There is a lot of content. You know, I, I do have a lot of questions, but I'm not sure if we're planning on making a, a decision on, on this tonight, if we're going to extend this to another meeting to allow us to basically review all three phases of the business so that we have a good understanding of all of them.
I think that would be an appropriate consideration, Mr. Bessie. Furthermore, we have one of our members who is not available this evening to review this. Because we were not able to get all of the information to, to our board members this evening, I would ask for a motion for a, put it on an agenda in a couple of weeks or something like that, and have Mr. Green send us, make sure that all of us get all of the information, and, and I will double-check with Mr. Sullivan tomorrow, Mr. Green.
I mean, thank you, ma'am.
And I would, I, I would add to that, maybe having a little bit of a presentation from Mr. Green on, on his business, just so that we can have an understanding of his, his mindset and what his process is going to be to get through all the phases of licensing and then executing each level of the business to be successful for himself, but also for the town.
Okay, thank you. I don't think I would accept that as part of the motion. The motion that I will accept, I'm sure he understands that that's what we want, but the motion I will accept will be to table this discussion for a time specific.
I would, I would make a motion to table this for a minimum of two weeks, if that would be acceptable to chair.
That would be the thirty-first of this month. Is that your motion, sir, the thirty-first of this month? No, earlier than?
No, earlier than the thirty-first of this month.
May I have a second to that motion?
I will second that motion.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to table this application or this discussion so that we can receive all of the information and have an opportunity to review it? Hearing none, I, you're waving your hand at me. If you want to speak, speak. Yes, Mr. Slavin.
But you said we shouldn't speak in too recognized.
Well, that's true.
Okay. I do have a copy of the, what was presented then. I have some concerns that, I think this needs to be some more discussion with Mr. Buckland as well. If, when you see this, this is going to be asking for everything, including retail in the presentation I received. Retail is not available in town of Wareham. We have three real, retail licenses. They're done. Plus the fact he would be distance-wise, I believe. Plus the fact he would be, distance-wise, I believe, too close to already operating retail per zoning bylaws as well. So I think there needs to be a little more discussion. I believe the delivery, I think we voted for three delivery only, just so everybody stands. I think we may be at that now. The courier service doesn't have a limit on it. People need to also understand, for some reason, the state changed their mind about vaping, and by eliminating, I believe, its vitamin E, I just found out today that vaping is available again. That was one of the major reasons for the company who was going to actually rent the property over Tremont Hill, but backing away because they couldn't make vape products. So there's a new increase in that whole thing now. But it just needs a lot more discussion before we even get to this point here. There just was too many pieces in there. So I would definitely go ahead and put this off at least a couple of weeks.
Okay, so, Mr. Bessie, I'm going to ask you to amend your motion, sir. I'm going to ask you to amend your motion to be to table this discussion till at least May 31st, and also to, we'll call it bounce back, the entire package to Mr. Buckland and possibly to Mr. Sullivan, so that we have a clearer idea of exactly what we're being asked for. Is that your motion?
Don't move.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. You understand the motion, gentlemen. Is that correct? So we're getting, we're postponing it, but we're also bouncing it back to Mr. Buckland for further information and for clarification. I will go for a roll call vote for that motion. Thank you, Mr. Bessie. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Green, you will need to discuss with Mr. Buckland some of the issues that we've brought up this evening, and I will give him an email this evening to also let him know what it is that we're looking for.
I will. Thank you, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening.
We have, on the next thing, we have a discussion with members of the solar bylaw study committee regarding possibly establishing an energy study committee, says committees. And we have had Ms. Nichols and Ms. Wolk volunteer to speak to us. They both were members of the solar bylaw committee, and they both volunteered to address us on what they feel might be something that we should be looking at. Which one of you ladies would like to speak first?
I'd be happy to.
All right, go ahead. Identify yourself, please.
Good guy. My name is Wonky Nichols. And me and I were both on the solar bylaw committee. And as part of the original report to the Board of Selectmen, one of the things that we had pointed out is that we felt that Wareham needs to keep on top of renewable energy. And we think that perhaps the idea of having a renewable energy committee as a standing committee would be helpful for the town. And I think we need a renewable energy committee monitor changes in both the technology and regulation of renewable energy. Can everybody hear me okay?
You're sort of breaking up, a little bit of crinkly.
Yeah, I don't know why. I'll get through it quick. When it comes to the technology, we need to recognize advancements and changes in renewable technologies and how those changes are going to affect our current bylaws. We need to be ready to understand and address new technologies which may be proposed by developers in the future, and whether those technologies are appropriate for developing and citing in Wareham. The climate change bills and other renewable energy laws are moving quickly. We know that the regulations and guidelines are constantly involving, as is the case law, for renewable energy. Any changes in this arena could also affect both new and existing renewable energy projects here. By monitoring these issues, our bylaws can be adapted in a proactive manner to best serve the residents of Wareham and maintain our ecologically sensitive areas as appropriate. So that's kind of what we were thinking. As we did all the research and all the discussion and talked to all the people that we did in order to craft the solar bylaw that we presented and was passed at town meeting, we came across a whole lot of information that we never knew about, but that was constantly changing even during the six to nine months we were working on it. So that is why we feel that perhaps this would be a good idea for the town to consider. And thank you for having us here this evening.
Thank you. Ms. Wolk, do you choose to address us? Where'd you go? There you go.
Thank you, Chairman Lites and group. I agree with Jackie. I mean, I think that it's really important for us as a community to stay in front of this. It's also important for us to consider what the future might hold for us. I mean, rather than having things done to us by the state, being prepared for receiving various kinds of renewable energy technologies, or take a stand against it, if that's what the town chooses to do, makes sense, but the best way is to be forearmed and be prepared in advance to know what's the town might want, where citing might be appropriate, and so on. And by having some sort of a standing committee to do that, I think it's in the town's best interest.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions of the young ladies?
Not directly. We, as Jackie knows, we arranged for a energy aggregation program, which is in its second term now, which is to try and find ways to save the residents' money as far as electrical expenses, et cetera. And I think what they're proposing to do is a good idea because every time we turn around, there's a different change in regulation, a different change on credits. And it really affects the town because everyone, everyone we turn around, someone says, well, let's put a whole bunch of solar fields over here that the town will own and use electricity. Well, we can't do that because we already have six megawatts of solar energy credits that we already have. We don't use it. We barely use a six megawatts. So we just don't have the flexibility that everybody thinks we can do. And we really need to have some central group that looks at what's going on and sees when there are openings, we can take advantage of. Because we constantly get hit with, why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? Well, the answer is we can't. Because there is nobody sitting down watching it because of what happened way back when the state first came out with it. The state, like the Campus Control Commission, seems to change rules every other day. So we have to have something in order to have some guidance because, if I select them, unfortunately, we can't keep up with you. There's just no way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, do you have any questions or comments of the young ladies?
So just a couple. One is how many, how many members of this board would you think would be necessary to be able to conduct discussions and really follow the trends of energy throughout the state?
Either one of you choose to answer? Denise throws her hands up.
I think that, I think that three is better than none. I mean, if we can get a couple people on a board to spend some time doing that, that's great. I don't know, I don't think it needs to be a seven-member committee. But I do think that it's important for somebody to be out there watching. The solar, you know, kind of snuck up on us, all the big projects. And I'm not sure we want that to happen again. And like, as you know, Ron, when we came up with the bylaw, the bylaw is going to be a living thing, as Denise likes to call it. And that's the reason we think this is important. So I don't know whether there's a set number of people that we need, but perhaps more than none would be great.
Denise, do you choose to add to that, Denise?
Well, I mean, I think three or four standing members would be a smart thing. You know, I mean, I also recognize that there may be a need to come to the Board of Selectmen and report out if there's some emerging technology or some issue that may seem critical. One thing that I see on the horizon is battery energy storage. I mean, I know that Carver is grappling with that. I don't know if Wareham has been approached by anybody to do that kind of technology. But that's something I see on the horizon that the town needs to be prepared to either take advantage of or decline. But, you know, better to have good reason one way or the other. You know, and as that technology continues to to change, then being on top of it makes good sense. Coming to the Board of Selectmen as part of a committee like that and saying a decision needs to be made, or perhaps another bylaw created to cover some particular emerging technology, then that could be another offshoot. It could be something else that becomes its own thing, but related. But again, having access, having, being on the front edge of it, I think, just makes good sense.
Great. Just a point of order. We always would have a committee with an uneven number of people, so that so that there's never, you know, a deadlock kind of thing. Mr. Bessie, do you have any other questions of the young ladies?
And then I would assume that this would probably be a committee that's kind of open-ended, not really a specific amount of time, but just as you say, a living, breathing document of that bylaw. And I would imagine that your thoughts for this type of a committee would be a long-term thing and not a specific amount of time?
Either one of you choose to answer that one?
Yes, that would be on thought because, as you know, everything's moving so quickly. I think we will know when we no longer need that committee to be in place. But I think, you know, at least three people that were interested in the technology and willing to follow it and report to the town here and there and say, hey, this is what's going on, or this might affect us, or this just got passed and, you know, we don't know how this is going to go. And I just want to make it clear that right now, battery storage is not allowed for us. But who knows whether the state is starting that because they're popping up all over the country.
Thank you. Ms. Wolk, do you choose to add to that? No, great. Are you all set with questions, Mr. Bessie?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, do you have questions or comments of these young ladies? I thought you already did. You're, forget it.
Just a comment.
No, no, no. Let me go to Mr. Chadwick. Sorry. Mr. Chadwick? Questions or comments of the young ladies?
I don't really have any questions. I just want to say thank you very much for grabbing the bull by the horns on this because, like you just stated, things change quick. And I'd rather be in front of it instead of behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Slaven.
Thank you. It should be probably three out of five on a committee, whichever way it works best. Should be three-year appointments like we usually do. It should basically put something together at the town meeting. So it's there and it continues on because this is not going to go away. It's not going to all of a sudden disappear. It's just going to continue more and more.
Thank you.
So in order to have some kind of stability and sustainability to this committee, it needs to be made as an official committee.
Okay. May I ask the following of all of you who are here this evening? Could you send me, me and me only, your ideas for how many people ought to be on the committee, what the makeup should be, and what the mission should be? I will bring your ideas back for next week's meeting for continued discussion and hopefully establishment of such a committee. And I thank you very much, unless you have any questions of us.
Thank you very much for having us here.
Thank you, and thank you for all of the work that you did on the solar bylaw. That was incredible. Thank you and good evening.
Good evening.
Next, we have a discussion and possible vote regarding a letter of support concerning the proposed development of Faring Hill property, which has been addressed under the Planning Board Application Number 2121 and the Planning Board Application 12 of 22. And Ms. Papalardo is here this evening to speak on behalf of Wareham Land Trust. Thank you very much for joining us, Ms. Papalardo. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for allowing me to address the board tonight. My name's Kathy Papalardo. I'm president of the Wareham Land Trust. And I'm here to speak briefly, I know you've had a big agenda, about the Faring Hill Conservation Area. The Faring Hill Conservation Area is 66 acres of town-owned and managed property that the Wareham Land Trust holds the conservation restriction on. Part of holding that conservation restriction, part of our responsibility, is to make sure that the conservation values of the property remain protected in perpetuity. And the reason that we're contacting the Board of Selectmen, as well as the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission, is there is a proposal to put a solar farm on the property that abuts the Fearing Hill Conservation Area. I don't know if any of you have been to the Fearing Hill Conservation Area, but there's beautiful trails through there that the land trust worked with Dave Pichet and Concom to put in. And it connects to the forty-something acres of the Westgate Conservation Area, which the town also owns. And the land trust and the BBC hold the conservation restriction on. So it's an absolute beautiful area. You can walk clear from Fearing Hill Road to Paper Mill Road and then along the Wee Reantik on the other side of Paper Mill Road. Our concern is that the solar farm will be at the top of Fearing Hill Road, and their proposal is going to clear cut, depending on what they finally settle on, plus minus 25 acres of trees and remove the stumps, which will pull out the soil. And Fearing Hill is naturally a wet area. There are springs and streams all throughout it. So if you're going to take the trees off the top of the hill and remove a lot of that topsoil, the water is going to run down that hill even further and faster. Fearing Hill on the east side drains to the, is part of the Wee Reantik River watershed. Fearing Hill on the west side, believe it or not, is part of the Sippican River watershed. The trees, as you may be aware of, trees are Mother Nature's, one of Mother Nature's gifts to us in regards to controlling erosion, storing and sequestering carbon, releasing oxygen back into the air, providing habitat for animals, providing food for animals in regards to acorns and berries, et cetera. They do aid in not only flood control, but they also help with drought. And the state, I was at a state meeting, and one of the drought preventers is protect your trees because they help prevent drought. That land is now shaded, and they're helping control the water runoff. Our concern for Fearing Hill Conservation Area is all of this water will be running downhill. So as the owner of the property and as holding the conservation restriction, we're concerned about the conservation values of this land being lost as water is pouring into it. So the land trust is, Elise Laduke Fleming, our executive director, is in the process of composing another letter to the Planning Board, to the Board of Selectmen, and to the Conservation Commission. And I say another letter, this letter, which Ron is well aware of. Ron Bessie on the Concom, this proposal had been before Concom as of June of last year. They recently pulled it, although I don't believe Concom has gotten notice yet. But they pulled this proposal and they have reissued it for this year, and it's coming back before all of the boards again. Same proposal, but new boards, so to speak. So we're asking the Board of Selectmen to write a letter, I would say, of concern about this proposal to the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission. And we're asking those commissions to reaffirm their commitment to protecting the conservation values of Fearing Hill Conservation Area.
Thank you, Ms. Papalardo.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to ask the gentleman if they have any questions of you, if that's okay?
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick, do you have any questions of the young lady?
No, I just support what you're doing, and I agree with you. There's There's a lot of concern. Not a big fan of chopping down twenty-five acres of area, but I'll just leave that at that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, you may be more familiar with it than others. Do you have any questions or comments for the young lady?
No, I, I mean, I'm going to be, I, I guess I'll be rather interested to see what the, the new proposal is and, and the changes are, having seen what was before. I'll be interested to see if there are any changes. So at this time, I really can't comment too much about it because I, I want to see, I'm definitely not a proponent of, you know, clear-cutting forests by any means, but I'd be curious as to see what they think the changes are that might be better for their, their project. So I'll, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that for now, that I'd like to see more information before I, you know, give a recommendation on what I think is good or not good.
Thank you. Mr. Slaven, do you have any questions or comments of the young lady?
Just comments. This whole issue keeps coming back at us constantly. I wish there was some way we could have, you know, property owners, the people who want to do these developments, sit down with the community and the, and the abutters and come up with a, a plan that works for everybody, some kind of win-win situation. Really not disturbed, I'm unhappy about the constant confrontation that we end up with, with one person goes away mad, the other person goes away okay. It's not a good way to do things. We, we need to come up with some system that the town wins, the property owner wins, and the conservation groups win. It sounds like, you know, a request or a desire that doesn't exist in this world, but we have to come up with something because we're all banging our heads against the wall and we're just not getting a smooth, easy, you know, translation. Of course, the biggest problem is money. You know, these pieces of property, the land trust, Buzzes Bay Coalition, some of these properties are just not within the realm of their financial ability to do things. But at the same time, in this case, you've got two conservation areas, one by the town, one by the land trust, whatever, and you've got a third piece in there which could negatively affect the other two. So again, I wish that we was a better way to do this in the beginning, but I'm hoping that we come up with some way for everybody to sit down and get this done the way it should be. Thank you.
I'm just going to ask a couple of questions so that the facts get out to the public, Ms. Papalardo. How large is the property in question that is being proposed to be developed?
I believe the entire parcel is like forty-ish acres.
Thank you.
There's ten acres in the back that they can't develop because it is too wet. But they are cutting off the front part at the street to divide it into house lots.
That was my next question, looking at one of the letters that I've received from you. Says building a subdivision as well as a large-scale solar installation. Do you know how large the subdivision would be?
I believe it's three houses.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I have no other questions of the young lady. What is your pleasure, gentlemen?
Could I make one comment, Madam Chair?
Yes, of course.
Just, just to address Ron's concern, the, the plans, Ron, what we have, what the proponent told the Planning Board, and I was at the meeting, they're submitting the exact same plan. They were concerned that the Planning Board members had changed because the chair had changed, there was now a new chair, and they did not like that. And Jane Gleason was not a full member yet, so they were concerned about not having a full board. So what they told the Planning Board is, they asked to withdraw without prejudice, and then they're resubmitting the exact same plan, which is already on the Planning Board's website for Monday night's meeting.
Thank you very much. We, we did get a link to that information submitted to us in the package, so we appreciate that clarification. Gentlemen, what is your pleasure? We've been asked to write a letter of support addressing the concerns which Ms. Papalardo has outlined.
Based, so I guess based on the information, the further clarification from Ms. Papalardo, that the packet that is being submitted is the same exact, I would make a motion to support the concerns outlined by Ms. Papalardo for the effects of the two properties that are held by the town of Wareham and the Wareham Land Trust to potentially be negatively impacted from a project that could cause issues.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to rephrase that. We cannot properly address a hearing before any other board. What I think we can do is, and I will ask Mr. Bowen if this passes muster, what I think we could do would be structure a letter that, that underlines our desire to have the Faring Hill Conservation Property protected. And Mr. Bowen's sort of scratching his chin. I'm, I'm very loath to tell any other board or committee what to do. I don't think it's proper. Mr. Bowen, could you help us out here, please?
I'm not sure. Well, I, I, I suppose your letter could be that you're aware that an application is forthcoming and that while you haven't had an opportunity to review it, you wanted to make sure that all appropriate environmental concerns are addressed as the board moves, as the Planning Board moves forward, including protection of town property and protection of land trust property.
I'm writing.
That is much better said.
Yeah, I think that I'm more comfortable with that, Mr. Bowen. Mr. Bessie, I'll, did any one of you write it down, or did you want me to read it and one of you was going to make it as a motion?
You can read it and then I'll, I'll.
You authorize the, I move to authorize the chair to draft a letter addressed.
Madam Chairman, I move that the chairman send a letter along the lines that Rich described.
Got it. Is there a second to that? Mr. Bessie, is that your motion?
That is my motion.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second and for comment?
Yes, motion made and seconded, and now I'll go for comment. Mr. Slaven?
I learned the hard way years ago that there is a legislative branch of the government and executive branch. We have the executive branch, and the planning board is legislative branch. They bring articles to town meeting under their, under their rules and stuff there. They, the Planning Board, capra planning. And the Finance Committee are a whole different setup than they are. For us to tell the Planning Board beforehand what to do and how to do is not a good idea. As, as Mr. Bowen has suggested, you know, we have concerns and hopefully they'll follow due, due diligence, et cetera. But if we, from my experience being on the planning board, if the selectmen were to tell them, do this, they're not going to follow directions. It's not the way to do it.
Right, but I think that Mr. Bowen's, what I will call flavorful butterfly attempt at a, at a, something I think does what the land trust is looking for, but it also keeps us from interfering with the business of any other board in town.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, please, Mr. Bowen.
I mean, what you, you know, Alan is absolutely right. In fact, you know, it would also, if you were trying to tell somebody what to do, it also engenders oppositional defiance. Oh, the selectmen are telling me to do that? The heck with them. I mean, we know, we, we know human nature. So what, what, what we're trying to do is to send it in a respectful way that asks them to make extra sure they're looking at affected parties and sensitive environmental concerns. And that, that's, we're not ordering them to do it, but we're strongly encouraging.
So if I draft a letter
I'll look.
And send it to you, it doesn't go anywhere until you and I are on the same page?
Thursday's a wonderful day.
Thank you. Okay, with that further discussion, may, may we have a roll call vote on the motion that Mr. Bessie made? Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick? And myself? Yes, thank you. Ms. Papalardo, thank you. I, I hope you understand our concerns about telling any other, okay, thank you so much, and I appreciate you visiting with us this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Take care. Mr. Slaven, what's next?
Uh, let's see where we are in this whole thing. Discussion and possible vote to approve the opt-out and reduction fee applications for curbside billing to speed at 2022 in the amount of $5,220.29.
Is that your motion?
That's the motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion to okay those opt-out and reduction fee applications? Hearing none? I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, for zero zero. I need a motion to confirm the vote for the action voted on, blah, 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 as spelled out under seven H. This is the confirmatory vote on the letter and the, the form that I signed last week for the conservation restriction work authorization form for 600 Main Street. Stony Run?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. It's motion to a confirm. Mr. Slaven? Motion to confirm?
I keep forgetting that we had words. Whichever word you like to use is fine.
I'd like a motion to confirm the, the action taken.
Motion to confirm.
Thank you. Is there a second to that? Thank, motion made and seconded to confirm the action taken. I will go for a roll call vote, please. Mr. Slaven?
I'll confirm that as a yes.
Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, thank you very much. I don't have any other business. Town administrator is not with us this evening. So I'm going to go to liaison and initiative reports, Mr. Bessie. Briefly, Mr. Bessie, because we're going to go for a land speed record here, buddy.
Very, very briefly, I got, I got a chance to introduce myself to the assessor's office this week, and they have a meeting coming up tomorrow night that should be very quick, but I will probably be at just to understand a little bit of their process. But other than that, I have nothing else to report this week.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Slaven.
An item only, new record. May 23rd, ER, Toby Hospital, ribbon cutting, nine o'clock in the morning.
Okay, and I have two things. May 23rd, 9:00 AM, Toby Hospital, ribbon cup, cutting, and also, I hope we all have signed up to have dinner at Whites of Westport on May 25th at 6:00 PM, where Serpent is going to be giving Mr. Slaven a, an award, and we're all going to have, I hope it's not rubber chicken. Anyway, those are all my reports, Mr. Slaven? Yeah, Mr. Chadwick, yes, sir.
Sorry, I do have one coming from Wareham Schools, the DECA program. Thursday, June 16th to June 19th is going to be the DECA Wareham Fest at Loops Park in onset. They will be doing a carnival to raise money for the DECA program.
Thank you very much. Is there any further business to come before this astute body?
No, item 10, we have nothing. We did bypass 7D, but that's, I believe, because one of the members is not here tonight.
That's correct.
Okay, so with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? It is not debatable. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick? Myself, yes. Good night, Wareham, and thank you very much, gentlemen. We'll see some of you in the next couple of days. Go, please sign all of the documents that we've okayed, gentlemen. Thank you.